Good evening. I'd like to call to order the regular town council meeting for Tuesday, July 9th, 2019. Please rise for a moment of silence. Led the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Certainly. Fishbein?
Here.
Laughen?
Here.
Laterno?
Here.
Marone?
Here.
Morgenstein? Shertel?
Here.
Testa?
Here.
Zandry? Chairman Savani?
Here. Both Councilor Zandry and Councilor Morgenstein advised me that they had work-related conflicts. Onto item three, the consent agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve or accept consent agenda items A through F and H.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. Onto item four.
Three.
Item three G has been removed from the consent agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve the addition of the part-time employee to the animal control office.
Second.
And we have Ms. Ellers, our Director of Animal Control, coming forward. Thank you for joining us. Thank you. I know Councilor Fishbein has some questions for you, but do you have anything you want to tell us before that?
I don't think so.
Okay, Councilor Fishbein, your item.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, good evening. Thank you for coming. You know, when I was reviewing the backup for the meeting, there was a couple of things that jumped out at me. You know, first of all, we just got through budget season and we're looking to add a part-timer. But then it talks about unforeseen circumstances, so it perked my ears and my interest. And I thank you because you did supplement, you did send us an email, which explains some of this, but in the email, you indicated that the part-time employee, and let me just get this straight. This is a permanent part-time employee, right?
Yes.
That they've been out for several weeks, so was, you know, because I know family leave, federal law, 12 weeks. What's several weeks?
I believe she went out on May 8th.
Okay, is it a workman's comp situation?
It is not.
Okay. So then there...
Just to clarify, worker's comp would mean it's a injury on the job?
I understand. It is not.
Oh, it's not? I thought you said it is a worker's comp.
It is not.
It is not. Did you understand that?
Yes, sir.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
Yeah, yeah, because then it's like canceled in a sort of different situation, and I couldn't tell from the backup whether that was or not. So then I guess there is a request to take the existing part-timer, the other part-timer, because you have two. And they've been filling in, so to allow them to continue to fill in. But there was a direction that that can't continue to occur. Is that...
Correct, because part-time employees cannot exceed 20 hours more than 15 weeks out of one calendar year.
And what is your understanding as to why? Is that perhaps because then they're classified as a full-time employee and other things happen?
Yes, I believe it has something to do with the pension plan if they work, and I might be misspeaking, but I believe if they work over that, then they have the ability to have rights to the pension. I could, I'm not sure, but there's a policy.
And I see the mayor poised. I didn't know, Mayor, if you had more information in that regard.
I think it's more appropriate perhaps to ask Human Relations or...
I didn't see Mr. Hutt.
Or me on this, because it is a general policy. We only allow 15 weeks if you're going over because of language in the pension contract.
Okay, so at 16 weeks, it triggers the pension benefit. Is that what I'm to understand?
Not exactly, but we're using 15 weeks as a trigger to avoid problems.
Okay, so it isn't...
We have to be under, so we're not going to set it right at the limit. In case there's an error and someone does work more.
So is it a safety net?
This is to prevent where we are not collecting pension, to have employees who are part-time then become part of the pension plan.
Okay, and I'm just trying to figure out where, sure, Mr. Hutt, no problem. I'm just trying to figure out where is that trigger and, you know, are we...
We have, Jim Hutt, Town Human Resources Director. We have quite a few part-time employees that work for the town as well as the Board of Education. And, you know, as you know, when you work in an environment that's heavily unionized, and when you have a variety of people working in a variety of departments, you have to be consistent, and you have to consistently apply the rules across the board. Back in May of 2015, we issued a policy memo in terms of how long a part-time employee can work in a full-time capacity. True, there is language in, you know, pension contracts that employees can be participants if they work 20 or more hours in a five-month period, so they have up to five months. The 15 weeks is really to build a cushion to allow some flexibility, but we can't encroach upon that too much. So to answer your question, it was, it's instituted to preserve part-time employment and not have employees encroach into areas where we have to start to provide them benefits. It's a way to consistently apply it because, you know, in this particular case, it had gotten away and the employee had worked beyond the 15 weeks.
So am I to understand, as I heard the five-month thing, does the clock reset every five months?
No, it's, if you work 20 or more hours, five months in a 12-month period.
So it's rolling essentially?
Yeah, so to preserve that and to maintain it, to keep part-time employees without encroaching in the areas of benefits, that's the reason for that. And also too, you know, back at the time, there was also the Affordable Care Act that if an employee triggered certain number of hours, you know, per year on average, it would trigger an expense to the town in terms of having to provide them health insurance. So this was uniformly applied across the town to maintain part-time employees in a part-time status and not to exceed a certain number of weeks.
Okay.
Full-time.
I got the concept.
Yeah.
But now, I think what's being proposed, you know, because I looked at the backup, I read the backup to mean we presently have two part-time employees, one is out, we want to put on a third part-time employee. But from the emailed backup, my understanding is this is not another all-the-time part-time employee. This is a per diem employee. It would be called in from time to time when this other individual who has been out, but we're expecting back, I guess, will need to be out. Is that your understanding as well?
It's to take the pressure off the part-timers to be forced into a full-time capacity that may trigger the town having to look at, you know, some benefits, you know, to provide them.
No, I understand. I'm looking at what this replacement person would do, so...
Correct.
It said that they would cover vacation for the other employees, which in this division, there's only two other employees, the part-timer and Ms. Ellers, right, so...
There's actually four employees. There's two part-timers and two full-timers.
Okay, so there's three other employees.
Correct.
Yeah. And then this individual who's potentially coming back may have some medical visits that they have to go to and that kind of stuff.
Correct.
So it would appear to me to be minor, because it's not the part-time employee, it's not 20, it's not 15 hours every week for this person. Right?
I don't know how many hours a week she would be assigning her. I can't answer that, so...
Can I?
Yeah, sure.
So the idea behind it is in under normal circumstances, when there isn't someone out for an extended period of time, we utilize the part-time employees, those the extra weeks to cover when there's, like, if I go on vacation, let's just say, that part-timer employee, that part-time employee would work those extra hours to cover in my absence or in Rachel's absence or... So what this means is now that this part-time employee can no longer work over the 20 hours for the remainder of the year, that there's no one else to cover in those absences. So it would also, not only would it cover this person who's on medical leave if they have future procedures, but if I'm out on vacation, for example, we would need someone to cover that gap as well because we can't utilize this other person anymore.
And for how long would you expect this new part-timer to be in place?
I would imagine until the end of the year, because then we could reset the calendar year.
For the end of the fiscal year?
The calendar year, because that's when the normal part-time employees would then be allotted their 15 weeks again, and we should be fine, assuming there's no extenuating circumstances.
Okay, so if I'm to understand that it's a per diem, it's minor except for the vacations, why not utilize overtime?
For the current full-time employees?
For the fill-ins, yeah. Financially.
I get, we never really touched upon that. I mean, we've already, I'm, I don't know, I don't know how to answer that question.
Okay, because I'm looking at the expenses of, you know, first of all, I would think it's going to be sort of hard, and you did indicate in your correspondence that you're anticipating having very little, very few eligible candidates. So not many people are going to want to jump through the hurdles for a per diem. There's no guarantee that they're actually ever going to work day one. And yet, in order for them to be qualified, we, taxpayers, have to pay for them to go through a six-week ACO Academy, which I don't know how much that costs.
Well, you don't have to pay for the academy itself, you have to pay for their time to attend.
Yeah, okay, so it's, we're paying for them before they even start to work day one for six weeks. Which sort of doesn't make financial sense to me, but as opposed to overtime, you know, on this thing. We have to have, we have to pay to have them vaccinated for rabies. We have to assure that they are properly trained in addition to the ACO, properly trained to handle domestic and wild animals, which I would think is part of. We'd have to pay to have them drug tested and pay to have them background checked. So has somebody done some sort of financial analysis on this as to overtime versus bringing on this new part-timer? I guess, Mr. Hutt?
No, that was not done by, you know, that was not done by me.
Okay.
I mean, I would leave that up to the department head to determine what's in their budget.
Okay, well, is there money in the budget for this?
Right now, there, yeah, right now there is.
Where would that money come from? Because we hadn't anticipated these expenditures.
Well, the only person, so Rachel, my full-time assistant, I apologize, is the only one who would normally dip into that overtime budget. So she would be the one who had, would have to work the extra hours. And during this time, when the other part-time employee has been out, we've all put in extra hours, but Rachel would be the only one who's working overtime.
And that's the overtime scenario, but these other expenditures that we're looking at, they were unanticipated when the budget was approved a few months ago. Where would that money come from?
Well, I think that ideally, it would not affect the budget because for the time that Amanda's not here, she won't get paid because she's a part-time employee, so for the time she's not here, she doesn't get paid. So hopefully, it would just go through the regular budget.
So the line that was appropriated for that part-timer is not being expended because that individual is not being paid because they're not working, so that is running a surplus, and therefore that money would be applied towards this new, this new part-timer. And I guess the last sort of area is, is there an emergency here that, you know, because it's going to take some time? Even if you find somebody tomorrow, right, they can't work for the town until they complete six weeks?
Well, no, they have to complete the six weeks within the first year of employment, so they can start. But unless you hire someone who has animal control experience, having them start tomorrow, they're certainly not going to be equipped to actually work in the capacity that I need them to work.
Okay, and the whole ACO Academy thing may be unnecessary if you reasonably anticipate that by the end of the fiscal, the end of the calendar year, you're not going to need the individual.
Well, this year's ACO Academy is in September, and the state would likely encourage them to go to that academy because they wouldn't be allowed, if I hired them today, they won't be here, and the year will be exceeded by next September. The ACO Academies are always in September, so they wouldn't be able to attend next year because then they'd be outside of that year bracket.
Okay, but if the year, so they have to do that within the first, within the first year?
Right.
Right? And if this individual is not going to be needed after December 31, which is well within the first year?
Right, but once you, so if I appointed someone tomorrow, the state is notified that I've hired a new employee as an animal control officer. They'll recognize that the ACO Academy only happens in September. So they will say this person needs to attend this September as in a couple of months because their year bracket will be outside of that next year.
Okay, thank you, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Councilor Laughen?
Thank you. I just wanted to be clear in case everybody didn't get it. The overtime scenario doesn't work because the only other person besides you, if you go on vacation, that could cover you and get overtime is the other person that's already working 40 hours and possibly getting overtime already. So unless she works 80 hours a week, she's not going to be able to cover your absence from the office.
Correct, that's why we utilize the part-time employees.
Right. That is the other full-timer. So if she's out, then the other two employees would step in and cover as much as they can, her 40 hours. If the other employee is already working her normal 40 hours, she's not going to work another, another 40 to cover hers, especially if they overlap in the first place on a nine-to-five basis, or eight-to-four, or whatever the hours are. Does that make sense? We need another body, is what we need.
Well, and I don't want to take it back, but do you need another body, so...
Well, I need, I need my part, I need a part-time employee to be able to work more than 20 hours per week during my absence.
A part-time employee can't get overtime because they'd have to get the full-time first. So to get the full-time, they'd have to work more than the 20 weeks or whatever.
The part-time employee would incur overtime after 40 hours.
Right.
That's your point. And we would not be looking to schedule someone regularly working more than 20 hours.
Right, this is cheaper.
And that, we can't do that.
I'm not looking to schedule a part-time employee for more than 40 hours.
No, they'd have to be less than 20, so it's 19 hours.
Correct.
Right, but that's what I'm saying, under normal circumstances, if I, if we didn't have extenuating circumstances like we do this specific year, we would have the ability to let a part-time employee work more than 20 hours. But now that she's at that 15-week mark, she can't work anymore for the rest of this calendar year. So that was what prompted my inquiry, whether an exception can be made for this particular employee.
Yeah. No, I get it. No, thank you. I think, I just wanted to make sure, I don't think everybody understood the overtime thing. So I just wanted to make sure that that was clear, that that's already been kind of like thought out, but, okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, just maybe for a point of clarification. The addition of a part-timer to assist Katie came about after the budget was well underway and maybe even adopted. So the budget that we're in now, 1920 fiscal year, I believe, two part-timers, if I go through the calculation, times 19 hours each, that's 38 part-time hours for the part-timers. Now, that doesn't matter to us when it comes to how many people, that, whether there's two part-timers or three, as long as the budget isn't overspent. The budget will become overspent if what I think I'm hearing or what I just heard happens because it doesn't matter how, if you have two people, three people, or four people working part-time, or 10 people. If it's an average of over 38 hours a week, then the need's going to be to come to you folks to move some monies. So I don't want, it was something that was said that there may not be a budgetary impact. There very well may be if those hours are being reached, because there's no money in that line item right now for anything more than, I believe, 38, or maybe it was 19 and a half hours. I'm sorry, I don't, I thought I had that document with me. So if that would be the case, it would be 39 hours per week. Unless, if somebody, if there were a third person and that person's working 22 hours, let's say, they're allowed to work more than 20 hours for a certain number of weeks, like Mr. Hutt said, as long as the other person or persons in part-time are not working their same level of hours, 19 hours, or else there's going to be a budgetary gap. There was a budgetary gap that we came to you, to fill into you last, I believe it was May, a few months ago, because I believe that's when we brought the new person on, is that correct? Okay, so we knew right then and there that there was going to be a little bit of a, you know, an overage. So we came to the council, we transferred, and I forgot the amount, I do apologize. But it was, the budget that you're looking at now was already adopted, or very close to being adopted, if this situation continues in the new fiscal year, which just started, you know, last week, just so that you're aware of that.
Councilor Laterno?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Jim, what, the employee that's out, and maybe between the both of you, you can fill in the blanks here. She's been out since May?
She just returned this last week.
Oh, she has returned?
Yes, but she will require procedures and medical care going forward, so I can anticipate she will be out.
And she's able to do the job?
Yes, she has been able to do the job this.
How long can a part-timer stay out and still be considered an employee, I mean consecutively? Is there any ruling on that?
How long can a part-timer stay out sick?
Yeah.
That's really up to the department, to the term of, we, you know, talked about this, about what type of accommodations, you know, could be made for the employee, which I talked to Katie about, you know, talking to her, see when she's able to come back and, you know, to work with her that way. So it's really dependent on what the department is willing to accommodate.
Okay, so it just, it's... So sick leave is just departmental? Every department has their own ruling as far as how sick leave is dealt with?
No, it's each, well, first of all, everybody accrues, you know, based upon their labor contract or if they're not bargaining, you know, the labor contract that's most closely linked to their position. It really comes down to what does the employee have available for sick time and what can the department do to accommodate them if they need more time? So it's on a case-by-case basis. There's an interactive dialogue that occurs when someone requests an accommodation under the ADA. We help departments, you know, do that. It doesn't happen all that much, but when it does happen, we do tell them, you sit down, you talk, you determine what can you do, what can't you do, and then you go from there.
And typically, on a part-time employee in your department, what is the allotted sick time?
They, well, they accrue sick time based on their time worked.
Okay.
But it's very typical, and it's very rare that they typically any, take any sick time, to be completely honest with you.
And what can they accrue? Do they get like a day a month, or...
I'd have to look at the part-time policy. I think it's up, they can accrue up to 40 hours, and they earn it after so many hours. If there's a policy, I can, you know...
It's a new state law, right?
Well, it's been around for a few years now, though we do have a policy.
Okay, thank you.
Councilor Testa?
Good evening. We, the conversation has gone in a few different directions, however, to bring it back to what for me is the determining factor here, you need another person to help out because you've had someone that hasn't been able to work enough. Correct? I mean, the person's out, has been out a lot, they're back, but there's an anticipation that there will be a need for additional hours. And the other part-timers you have cannot cover the anticipated shortfall because of the problems with going over, having too many hours.
Yes.
Fine. Excuse me. Do you anticipate an ongoing, like, permanent need for the additional part-time employee?
No.
Okay. So my question to Mr. Hutt is this. I understand we've got contracts and concerns to worry about. But what I was thinking, I'm thinking of the potential cost of training and so forth, of bringing on another person, possibly. And wondering, have you considered, or is it possible that we hire, that the current part-time employees, for lack of a better term, sign a waiver of some sort, acknowledging that the need for these additional hours is not permanent? And for that, and in light of the circumstances, they're going to work additional hours but have no claim on whatever it is you say they might have a claim to. We sign waivers for insurance coverage all the time. I mean, has that even been thought about? Because it's a temporary fix. It sounds like we're making this much more complicated than we have to, or maybe not, maybe I'm...
I don't, I don't think legally that can be done.
Well, not thinking legally it can be done is not the same as having a lawyer tell you it can't be done. Has it been looked at?
No, we don't look at it because we don't think it can be done.
Well, that means you looked at it.
You can't waive a right like that.
What do you mean you can't waive a right like that? You waive anything. I mean, you're just, you're just saying that. Have, have we thought about it? And if you say no, because we took for granted, we couldn't do it?
We didn't take anything for granted. My understanding of the law is you can't do that.
Has someone asked, could it be waived? Could someone sign a waiver saying, "I'm waiving my right to that, so I can work 30 hours for the next four months"? Has anyone asked that question?
Not that I know of, no.
Okay, thank you. I'm done, thank you.
Councilor Fishbein?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just trying to figure out the staffing here. Are you, do you staff 24 hours?
Yes.
Okay, so, and is there overlap on the staffing at all?
Uh, and, well...
Is it single staffing, is basically the question?
Well, so during our normal business hours, yes, there's people overlapping, but after-hours, they're on call. So every third week, it rotates for people on call, but they're not paid unless they come in during after-business hours.
So I'm just trying to figure out, just administratively, when somebody goes on vacation, can that schedule be shifted so that there isn't that overlap to make that accommodation? Because I would expect that, you know, vacations are not cumulative weeks taken, you know, it's one week and, you know, regular business, we deal with that all the time. We don't go out and hire somebody new, you know, to fill in that, that place. Is that possible?
Well, we do. I mean, they, there's certainly gaps in coverage when some, like a full-time person's on vacation, there's certainly not someone there. There aren't two people the entire day. However, it is a safety concern because a lot of our animal complaints do require two people.
do require two people to be available to handle calls.
I recognize that. I didn't want to tread on what you, as the head, feel is appropriate.
No, no, not at all. I didn't feel that way. I just wanted you to understand that we, the coverage is thinner when someone is on vacation, but we do try to cover as much as we can without going over too many hours.
Yeah, I just, you know, pointing out that one of the things that you, you know, basically, there's two pots of coverage that are indicated in your email, and that's when this individual is going to be out, which we hope is not very much, and to cover vacations. So, I don't know. It just seems unnecessary to me to go through the expenditure to bring on another part-timer on a temporary fix, you know, that we're having to educate, you know, pay six weeks before they even really work a day. I just don't see the financial benefit ultimately. But, okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yep. Any comments from the public? There being none, Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
No.
Laffin?
Yes.
Letourneau?
No.
Marone?
Yes.
Shertel?
Yes.
Testa?
Yes.
Chairman Savoni?
Yes.
And the motion passes.
Thank you. Moving along the agenda, item five, the public question and answer period. Mr. Liu is reconsidering.
Good evening. Jared Liu, 59 Curtis Avenue. I want to make sure I saw item, actually, let me start off by saying, congratulations to Lyman Hall Boys Hockey Team. I was at the final game, I was at some of the games leading into that. Congratulations to the Sheehan Boys Hockey Team as well. Really fantastic season, and enjoyed following them quite a bit. Just want to make sure I saw this item on the agenda correctly, which looked like it was related to that. Are we requesting about $2,100 to pay for T-shirts for the hockey team? Is that correct?
That's correct. I believe there are two shirts per hockey player, one long sleeve, one short sleeve. I don't have other details than that. This was through the athletic director at Lyman Hall.
Great. I think that's fantastic, just to celebrate their win. My question here is, you know, is there a policy that directs that? So essentially, why, why are we spending $2,100 in this instance?
Well, there's been a standing procedure, really, for a long time. When any team wins a state championship, we recognize the team. The Board of Ed, I believe, recognizes as well, but the general government has always recognized the team in some fashion. And it has been different things have been purchased over the years, but in this instance, this was decided by the athletic director and the team itself. And so we are participating by buying the shirts, and they will be presented to the team.
Great. I think that makes total sense, and I absolutely appreciate that. I guess what I'm trying to reconcile is, so I saw the Unified Sports students outside of Dunkin' Donuts shaking a can, right? You can picture them, you know, shaking a can to raise $750 to fund their transportation to go to the state championships for the Special Olympics. Why wouldn't that be something that we'd pay $750 for?
This is recognizing the high schools in town. There are a variety of other leagues that do have occasions where they win state or even national competitions, that may be, but we have restricted our process to the public schools and recognizing their achievements.
So it might not be clear to you, the Unified Sports is a high school sports team. Students who have special needs can't participate the same way on the varsity team, so this is their varsity sport.
This is the Wallingford?
The Wallingford Unified Sports.
Okay. You just said it was Unified Sports.
They call it Unified Sports Program.
So it's a Wallingford, if the team should win at a national level or state level, why certainly they would be recognized in the same way?
And so I thought that might be the case, and I wondered again, why weren't they recognized? Because some of their athletes won the gold medal at the state-level competition for the Unified Sports, and nothing.
In the past, we have never recognized individuals. It's always a team. So it's generally team sports that this applies to. We've, I know there have been individuals who've won state championships in wrestling and a variety of other competitions, but our recognition has been reserved for teams. It's not individuals, it is a team effort.
Okay, so that makes a little more sense. So if it's a wrestler, or a tennis player, or a swimmer who wins the state-level championship themselves, but not the team, they would not be recognized?
Right. If it is not a team competition, then we have not recognized. And we're not always aware of when individuals win such events. We are generally very well aware when a team does through a variety of, but this is the method we've been using.
For sure. Yeah, so I guess I'll just finish by saying, again, congratulations to Lyman Hall and to Sheehan. I think they both did an admirable job, deserve to be recognized. I think our Unified Sports athletes also deserve to be recognized, not just the ones who won the gold medal at the state competition, but all of them for tremendous job they're doing, and also raising their own money for their uniforms, for their transportation, for their social events. You know, I think it's really special that they do that. You know, I realize it's slightly different issue, but because it was funding, it also made me think, gosh, slightly different, but you know, about $15,000, which could have gone into Rescue 3, you know, it's hard to justify. Again, I realize this is school, this is a team thing, but, you know, at the end of the day, these are town-wide financial decisions. And so that kind of stuck with me as well. But again, congratulations to Lyman Hall and to Sheehan.
Mr. Hein?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. James Hein, 342 South Elm Street. I was here at the last meeting during a public question and answer. I brought up the CMAC arbitration result. I, at that point, asked that it be placed on as an agenda item through one of you. I see it's not on the agenda this time around. You know, we just spent about a good half hour, 45 minutes, talking about a part-time position. We spent over an hour at the last meeting talking about a tax break to a hotel owner that would have amounted to $350,000, $4,000, which is a lot of money. With the CMAC result, again, you all were told that the town expected to recover $18 million. The town netted $800,000. That's a $17 million difference. And here's why I'm concerned, because the town's claim in that case was that it had been overcharged by CMAC for years, for years. Why did it take so long for the town to figure out that it was being overcharged? And how did that come about? How did the town realize that it was being overcharged? These are questions that I would think, as the representatives of the people of Wallingford, you would want to know, and you'd want to bring out so that the people of Wallingford know. Two, the arbitrator on the vast majority of claims had come to the conclusion that the town actually was not being overcharged. So that leads to another question, which is, how was it that the town misinterpreted its own contract? Because that's what the arbitrator ultimately found. On the few claims that the town did win on, the arbitrator said you can only go back so far because there was a provision in the contract, a provision that the town agreed to, that said you can only go back so far if you're claiming that you were overcharged. That then leads me back to my original question, which is, why did it take so long for the town to realize that it was being overcharged? You know, I just, I think it's extremely important that, as town counselors, this issue be brought out and made an agenda item so that the people of Wallingford get answers to these questions. That's 17 million, that's not chump change. That's millions upon millions of dollars. I understand there may be disputes over actually how much the difference is. But again, that's even more reason to have the electric division come before you and figure out what happened. And again, I'm going, you know, I'll ask somebody up here to put it on the agenda, make it an agenda item, so that some of these questions are answered. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I think we've had answers to most, if not all, of those questions multiple times. I'm going to ask the town attorney to address them.
The two springing contracts, which were a major part of the arbitration, only came into existence after Wallingford stopped being in all-needs recipient of power from CMAC. They had been put into existence long ago, but were meaningless until we left being a customer. One of those projects, the town chose not to proceed in, and a lot of the predictions on the dollars that were involved were based on 10 years. We pulled out of one of those contracts at the end of last year because we decided we didn't want to be involved in the project with CMAC anymore. So the fact that we're not going to gain that money is because we're not staying in that contract because we thought it was not in the best interest of the town. The other project's still going on. As the PUC explained, we're saving several hundred thousand dollars a year, and that attorney Hein chooses not to face the fact that we're saving that money going forward in the future. He's only concentrating on the amount of damages we're awarded, which is not 800,000, it's 3.7 million dollars. It did cost money to go through the arbitration. Would the town have been better served by ignoring this and ignoring that we were being overcharged? I don't think so. I think the money was well-spent. We discovered a lot of things, and the position of CMAC had been that they, they weren't going to tell us until they were ordered to tell us. I think the town did well on arbitration. It was approved unanimously by the town council. I think attorney Hein is just looking for issues to bring up in an election.
I, I think I'm bringing up a legitimate question, and I take issue with you suggesting that I'm doing this for election purposes. The response actually does not address any of the issues that I've raised. One, why did it take so long to realize that we're being overcharged? You didn't hear an answer to that. Two, why was it that we misinterpreted our own contract? And three, I guess if we've already pulled out of some of these contracts, does that mean that the electric division's estimate for savings in the future are also in question? Because are we going to pull out of those as well? These are questions that should be answered. And I think it's incumbent upon a town counselor, when we're talking this kind of money, to bring these issues to the floor so that the people of Wallingford understand. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, just $18 million was discussed initially. We didn't have information from CMAC to be any firmer in our view of that estimate. After receiving, finally, after years, the information requested from CMAC, it was calculated by our experts that the total came in between $11 to $12 million. We, in fact, received $3.7 million in damages, and over 10 years, the balance represented savings of an additional amount of money that comes close to what it is, between $11 to $12 million. I believe we exited CMAC in 2013. As of 2014, there were discussions regarding contract mediation. There were those requirements. That started a process. After a couple of years of that, ultimately, arbitration began, and there was a lot of issue with various questions. Ultimately, however, I think the town did prevail. Our money we are saving or have received in damages totals between $11 to $12 million. That's, if we spent $3 million as we did to receive $11 to $12 million, it would seem to be a very successful effort to protect the customers and the businesses here in town.
Anyone else for the public question and answer period? Mr. Gross?
Bob Gross, Long Island Road. Just have a question on, following up on this. If I remember correctly, in the beginning, some of it was the electric division, and the chairman of PUC is here, was that every year you have the ability to see what your costs and expenses are with what CMAC's billing you, but the town never requested that, and never went back and looked at that. And that was some of the issues that were going on here, and that was some of the dollars, and I, and I'm not sure, but, you know, chairman is here, that...
The chairman's not here.
PUC?
The director.
Director, yeah. Okay, Beaumont, okay, whatever, okay, the director, but he was head of the electric division at that time also. So qualified to answer the question. The town did not ask to true, I think the word they used was true up the cost between the two. And then when this litigation started, they couldn't go back in time to some of the years that the numbers weren't right. So some of it did fall on Wallingford, and why it happened that way, I don't know, but I'm just saying. So it's not as clear as everybody's saying, in my recollection of this from a few years ago, when this started arbitration and went into, you know, went into the legal case. Thank you.
Anyone else? Ms. Kofor?
Just to make sure, I actually have questions regarding the bonding for the $490,000. That would be a separate agenda item, right?
You will, we will open a public hearing on that. There being nothing else, I close the public question and answer period, and we move on to item six, which is to conduct a public hearing and consider an act on the following ordinance entitled, "An Ordinance Appropriating $490,000 for School System Capital Improvement Program Phase III and Authorizing the Issue of $490,000 of Bonds of the Town to Meet Said Appropriation and Pending the Issuance thereof, the Making of Temporary Borrowings for Such Purpose." I hereby open the public hearing. Ms. Kofor, did you want to speak?
Adelaide Kofor. I live on 35 Wiffle Tree Road, here in Wallingford. I have a few comments to this topic. I, in general, I... I, in general, I fully support the general motion of the town taking on the larger capital projects for our school facilities. That being said, however, I do not support a big part of this particular project, specifically the removal and replacement of five oil tanks at our elementary schools. The removal, if I understand correctly, is mandatory because they have reached their thirty-year limit, their lifetime limit, and they have to be removed by state law. However, the replacement, I think, is not mandatory. Out of the seventy-five thousand per oil tank, if I understand that correctly, the removal itself takes up about fifty thousand and the replacement is twenty-five thousand. Is that correct? Roughly?
If, if you're gonna answer the question, if you wouldn't mind putting that on the record, that'd be great. And if you're coming up, you might as well take the opportunity and introduce yourself for the record and stay there.
Good evening, Councilman. I'm Mark DeTulis, Supervisor of Buildings and Grounds.
I am Dominic Barone, Business Manager for the Board of Ed.
Thank you. If you, if you'd like to answer the question, please go ahead.
The removal of an oil tank is somewhat variable depending on what kind of soil conditions you find. We have had issues in the past where we removed an oil tank and actually found contamination from the previous tank that was taken out of the ground some thirty years ago. So you never quite know what you're going to find. Typically, oil tanks are installed with some kind of spill containment where the dealer would be filling that oil tank. And they, they do get, suffer some spills over the years. Some are minor, not reportable. But you can have soil contamination. So that's kind of a wild card. So we've taken that into consideration to some extent, but we did not cover all costs. I'm sure you, from time to time, see tanks being changed at gas stations. Sometimes those jobs go fairly smoothly, but other times you see equipment on site for six, seven months. That is generally is a sign that there's some kind of contamination and they're trying to clear that up. The, the cost of the tanks and the install of the tanks are pretty, pretty set. But that, the wild card is the environmental issues. These are mandated. We do need to have oil tanks on our site. We can't run schools without them. There are opportunities to look into other areas and conservation. But we will always be burning some type of fuel, even if we went to like geothermal systems, solar energy systems. There still has to be that fuel burning component. We could possibly install even like electric heat pumps, but there has to be some backup for that system. Electric heat pumps in, in this area of the United States will, will not handle all your heating and cooling needs. There does have to be some kind of a backup for that system. So there's, there's not, there's not a lot of options here. We do have one school where we could possibly eliminate the oil tank and just burn straight gas. That's a dual-fuel school right now. There are some drawbacks to that because eventually the, you know, oil at some point will become less expensive than natural gas. Right now, we're burning straight natural gas. So you lose that option. The, the cost involved in having fuel oil underground is substantial. There's insurance costs, there's testing costs, inspection costs. The, they're closely monitored by DEEP and the EPA. When, if we can eliminate a tank, all that goes away. We have, wherever possible, in the past, we've put tanks above ground, which eliminates that DEP monitoring. An above-ground tank is, you know, it, it's about the safest fuel storage you can have. It doesn't require any containment other than the secondary containment that's built into the tank. And it's a nice way to go, but it's impractical in some of our installations. We've done it at DAG, we've done it at the maintenance garage at Sheen, we've done it at at least one of the facility and it's worked out. But it's only good where we can hide a tank behind a building. We don't, we obviously don't want that tank in the front of the building or someplace where it'll affect students.
Thank you.
I wasn't done. That's, that's okay. I have more. So if we put in another five oil tanks, we basically have to plan for another five removals in thirty years maximum. If it all goes well and if there is no spill before that. So that would be another roughly two hundred and fifty thousand, twenty years, thirty years from now.
That's correct.
Okay. So instead of just replacing old tanks with new ones and instead of the usual piecemeal process of repair and replace what we have, I actually beg to differ. I'm not convinced that there always needs to be oil for backup. And I would like to ask the council to request from the board, from the Board of Education and the administration, a comprehensive strategic plan for energy-related updates. Let me explain that. The strategic plan, as far as I could see it, lists almost nine million in energy-related projects over the next three years. And I'm not even talking about what comes after that. For the next three years, we have about three point five million for air conditioning updates. Almost two millions of that relates to elementary schools. Then we have two million for heating updates, three million for the building envelope, like roof, siding, windows, and so on. Some lighting upgrades and then about five million for paving of parking lots, new bus loops, et cetera, which I consider energy-related because I think we could do something with that. So instead of doing what we do so far, and they're, they're doing a great job on it, but I think we could do better. What if we could wrap all these projects coming down the pipe into one comprehensive plan that keeps the lights on and the AC running and improves the school's energy system? If we need to invest anyway, why don't we plan those investments in a way that will improve the energy, energy efficiency and reduce the energy operating costs? What if such a comprehensive energy improvement plan could save us twenty to thirty percent in energy costs? And we only pay two point seven million instead of four million annually in utilities, maintenance, and heat for the schools? And thirty percent is actually absolutely reasonable. Just today, I sent a long list of energy efficiency projects in schools around the state and in the country to Mr. DeTulis, and I'll be happy to share that with everyone interested. There are endless case studies on how school districts updated their energy management over time and budget neutral because you have to repair, replace, or maintain anyway. As long as they follow a comprehensive plan, that is. And then of course, there are examples of how schools districts invest even more and attain even bigger savings. And that does not only happen in California. It happens in Colorado, Michigan, Massachusetts, places with winters as cold as we have or even colder. So again, I beg to differ. I think there are ways to find alternatives. We don't even have to look as far as Colorado. We have two very efficient, very impressive and energy efficiency projects right here in town. Gaylord Hospital installed a solar thermal hot water system in two thousand and eleven. They invested five hundred and fifty thousand to cover sixty-five percent of their hot water needs. And hot water, that is one hundred and sixty degrees Fahrenheit for hospital. Then we have the Kohler Environmental Center with solar hot water, solar power generation, an earth deck that preheats the outside air before it even needs to be heated, and geothermal wells. The center was engineered to produce one hundred percent of the energy they need. And then if you look at neighboring schools districts, in Suddington, the town installed solar and multiple elementary and both middle schools as part of school renovations and townwide energy upgrades. In Cheshire, an efficiency project for high school approved last, this two thousand and nineteen May will invest fifty-two thousand for annual savings of twenty thousand dollars. So the payback is about five years. And I already mentioned the solar carport, you might remember that. So I hear the usual counterarguments. Our low electric rates don't allow for the same savings or the same payback time. Well, as I said about two weeks ago, I think it's worth looking into those numbers again. As fast as the technology changes, we really have to go back and check that out. Because the cheapest energy for the schools and for our town and for our taxpayers and for our bill payers is the one we don't have to buy. Either because our systems are so efficient or because we generate our own electricity as the Kohler Center does. Argument number two, there's no money. Well, what about the money from the CMEC arbitration? What about the Energy Efficiency Fund that is accrued from the Wallingford Electric Division customer bills? What about creative funding strategies like a performance service contracts or tax exempt leases? What about grants? What about bonding like we discussed tonight? I think we've, if we have a really good plan, we can find the money. Argument number three, it's too complicated. Well, then let's get some help. Start with an energy audit, a comprehensive energy audit. In the, in the definition of the American Society of HBAG and Refrigeration and Air Conditioning Engineers, it's called a level-three audit that could actually tell us how to plan those larger improvements so we can save on energy costs. I asked the school board in February to reconsider the oil tank replacement. I asked the board in April to come up with a strategic energy, energy plan. And tonight, I asked the council to request such a, such a strategic energy plan as a prerequisite for any further capital improvement request. Actually, I would, I would like to change, challenge the council to collaborate with the school board and come up with a comprehensive energy plan for all the town buildings. A comprehensive energy audit would be the first step. And a reinstated Energy Conservation Commission could help with that. If we do borrow money, please don't borrow it for oil tanks because I think there's better, better ways to do it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? I see him hand Mr. Gross. It was so quick.
Yeah, it was. Bob Gross, Long Hill Road. Are, do these schools, the five that you're putting oil tanks in, do they have gas there already?
Only one.
But you're, are you gonna replace that oil tank there too or no?
I would rather not. I'd like to pull that tank and just use straight gas on that facility. It's Fritz Elementary School. And the tank is located in the front of the building by a garden and a student area that was donated. And I would really rather not have that oil tank in place.
Who makes that decision then? Can't you just say?
I'm gonna ask the Board of Education if we can look at that. It's, it would, it makes sense to me, but I, I would look for their approval.
Makes sense not to put any of the tanks back in the ground. Can you get, and you're nodding yes to that, but can you get gas to the, I mean, I agree with the woman who spoke previously. I mean, so, I mean, I'm a big proponent of alternative energy sources. But in the interim, till all that can happen, I don't know when these have to come out by, is, why don't you get gas into these places? Because of the cost of, the additional cost of putting, taking these out of the ground, potential future costs that you're gonna have or liability if they leak, which is always a possibility?
Where, where we can, we're looking at that option. In the future, we have several tanks that need, are gonna need to come out, I think, two or three next year. And we are looking at the option of gas at, at least Sheen High School. We're gathering information right now to see if the, if we can come to a deal with the gas company to where we can get adequate gas to that facility. If we, if we can, that would be ideal because right now we have aging oil-fired boilers in that building. And if we could, if we could update those boilers to boilers that similar to the ones that we installed at Moses White Beach, there will be a substantial savings to the town. Steam boilers are a little bit different animal. You can't get the efficiency that you would get with a condensing gas water boiler. But the boilers that we put in at Moses White Beach are the most efficient boilers in the industry and relatively trouble and maintenance-free.
They're gas.
They are gas, straight gas.
Are you replacing, and any of these schools that you have oil, do they have the old, the old steam? Are they still?
All the, the schools listed this year are all hot water systems, not steam systems.
And how old are they to begin with?
The systems are, for the most part, are as old as the facility. So if the building's forty years old, the boilers are forty years old.
So it would be wise to listen to the lady in the rear there. Not that I didn't, I didn't catch her name, but it would be wise if you have forty-year-old burners to try and do some type of gas backup with some type of alternative energy source. And there's many of them out there now. And you're nodding yes again. So I mean, and I think her idea of having a, a plan would be hoove the town to cost savings, potential safety issues down the road with leaks. You're gonna replace these burners sooner than later, in some cases anyway.
Let me just clarify, the, the boilers are original, the burners have all been upgraded. You know, they're, they're getting older now and to the point where they may need to be updated again. But the burners were all updated to modern equipment. We had all the original burners, rotary cup burners, you know, when they fire, flames shoot out of the front of them. Those are all gone. They were gone before I started here in ninety-six. So those burners are modern and updated.
But they're modern, but they're still not latest generation.
It's time to look at them again.
Correct. So I would just hope the council and the Board of Ed and, I mean, take these out if you have to. When do these actually have to come out of the ground?
They're scheduled for to come out this year. They...
Twenty nineteen.
Yeah. And if we, if we could show DEEP that we have, we, we are making progress in that area.
You can extend it.
They, they'll give us some leeway.
So I think that if, and I, if the Board of Ed, and I guess you work for the Board of Ed and the gentleman next to you, that you get a plan moving quickly. I mean, there are, I mean Bristol Myers had their own cogeneration plant in town. Newcore, I mean, you guys, you have big facilities up there, especially you have the ones that are close to each other. And if the town decides to build one high school or something of that nature, you could institute all that into one and the cost savings could be substantial. I understand that we produce, you know, we don't produce electricity, but we buy it wholesale. But in the long run, solar and geothermal and those are still cheaper in the long run. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, I close the public hearing. Is there a motion and a second to read the title of the proposed ordinance and to waive the reading of the remainder of the ordinance incorporating its full text into the minutes of its meeting?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Laffin, seconded by Marone. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion passes. "An Ordinance Appropriating $490,000 for School System Capital Improvement Program Phase III and Authorizing the Issue of $490,000 Bonds of the Town of Wallingford to Meet Said Appropriation and Pending the Issuance Thereof, the Making of Temporary Borrowings for Such Purpose." Is there a motion and second that the proposed ordinance appropriating $490,000 for the School System Capital Improvement Program Phase III and bond authorization be adopted?
Yes, so moved.
Second.
Moved by Laffin, seconded by Laterno. Comments and discussion from the council? Counselor Fishbein?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a question, I guess, for Mr. Fozzy. Is there an intention to actually issue these bonds?
I'm sorry, Councilman, I couldn't hear you.
Is there an intention to actually issue these bonds?
Yes.
Okay. And I guess for Mr. Fozzy. I see sitting there. The terms of the document that's before us, is that governed by the charter? Or is there some other operation that comes up with this criteria?
Charter, statute, and federal law.
Okay. So I noticed that the issuance of the bond and the series thereof is not determined by the town council. It's determined by the mayor, the comptroller, and the town treasurer, by any two of them. Where does that come from?
We've done it that way for a long time. We've done it that way for a long time. The generation of that is, state statute authorizes that the town may designate officials to make determinations with respect to the issuance of the bonds. Years and years ago, meetings were actually held at bond sales where a board of finance or a town council or a board of selectmen would schedule a meeting to be held when bids for bonds were submitted, and they would vote whether or not to award the bonds. It was a terribly cumbersome process. Quorums were not always held, and it was an exercise that wasn't worth the effort because these bonds are sold at public sale under the ordinance and resolutions in other towns that require the bonds to be awarded to the lowest responsible bidder determined on a true interest cost basis. So it's a perfunctory process. And so it's been done this way in towns throughout the state for a long, long time.
So I'm just trying to figure, you know, I flipped through the charter today, and I read this to mean that it is possible with regard to the issuance of these bonds that the mayor is subservient to his employees, meaning that determination is made by two individuals of a body of three.
Correct.
The mayor, the comptroller, and the treasurer.
Correct.
So it is certainly conceivable that, you know, the townspeople have elected the mayor, the charter gives us a strong mayor system, that the mayor can be overruled by that body. So I question why, since we're approving the issuance of the bonds, why do we need the comptroller and the treasurer to possibly override their employer because they're subservient to the mayor, he hires them? Why not just have it? The mayor makes the decision, you can consult with whomever.
You could do it that way. Typically, it's not done that way. In fact, I don't know of any municipality where it is done that way because it's a concept of, if you will, a countersignatory, a check and a balance. But again, as I said, it's selling widgets really. Bonds are just a cash flow, and the sole issue is what's the lowest cost to the town. So that's how the award would be made, but.
I understand, and what I'm hearing is this is the way we've always done it and we continue to do it. I'm just, you know, when I see this stuff, I, you know, question why.
Yeah, that's fine. I would just say that we, we changed the way we did it because this is, in my opinion, and I think in the opinion of many, a better way. So it's not just we've always done it this way. We didn't always do it this way, but we've done it this way for a long, long time.
So then just moving just a little bit further with that, the issuance requires signatures of all three of those individuals, not two of the three?
I think it's two out of three.
No, well, it says, "Be executed in the name and on behalf of the town by the manual or facsimile signatures of the town officials." It is the only.
And town officials is defined as two out of the three.
Well, I, I would have to, or any two, okay. So is that the language above the mayor and the comptroller or any two of them? So the body itself is not made up of town officials? Because it seems like you're defining a word with the same word, you know, what is black? Well, black is black, right? So in order for them to be considered town officials, they have to be two of the three in agreement of this group of people, because they aren't a town officials until they agree, right?
Right.
Under, under the way this is written, I, I don't necessarily agree that's the way it should have been written, but, so, okay, that explains that it would only require two because they didn't become town officials. Okay, that explains the rest of the questions that I had. So I thank you for the education. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Any other comments from the council? There being none, Benclerk, would you please call the roll?
Thank you. Fishbein?
Yes.
Laffin?
Yes.
Laterno?
Yes.
Marone?
Yes.
Shertel?
Yes.
Testa?
Yes.
Chairman Savoni?
Yes.
The ordinance is adopted.
Yes, it is. Thank you, Mr. Fozzy. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
On to item seven.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve the job description for land use specialist slash zoning enforcement officer.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Good evening.
Good evening.
Remind us who you are for the record.
What's that?
Please remind us who you are for the record.
Sure, I'm Casey Hand, I'm the town planner.
Thank you.
And I'm Jim Hutt, Town Human Resources Director.
Welcome back.
We're here tonight to request your approval of a job description for land use specialist slash zoning enforcement officer. It's, the pay grade for this position is grade three with a salary range of $61,376 to $78,529. I did provide a copy of the job, the draft job description for you, so if you have any questions, we'll be more than happy to answer them.
Do we already have a position like this?
No.
Okay. And who is currently acting as the zoning enforcement officer?
Right now, what we have is, so history, when, when I started here, I started as the assistant town planner. There was a full-time assistant town planner, a full-time town planner. When the town planner retired in 2012, that was March of 2012, I took over as town planner in December of 2012. At that time, the assistant planner position was reduced to a part-time position. As that has sort of evolved over the years, it has become a zoning enforcement officer position largely because, especially being a part-time position, there, there wasn't time to do anything else. So it really didn't make sense for it to be a planner position. The other reason for that is as a part-time position, finding and keeping someone in that position who's qualified as a planner was, was very difficult because the candidates I was getting as planners were really people that were looking to kind of make it a stepping stone to a full-time position. So right now, it's a zoning enforcement officer part-time position. What has happened since then, or sort of over the years, is as a part-time position with that zoning enforcement responsibility, there really is a need for it to be a full-time position. That position does also handle the zoning, staffs the zoning board of appeals. And then the added component for this position, or sort of what's expanded in this position, is really support for the office. So I spend a lot of time answering questions at the counter that could be answered by a land use specialist, that could be answered by someone who has basic understanding of our zoning regulations, which would free up additional time for me to do some of the larger scale planning that we really need to do. The other part of it is that the zoning enforcement officer, I mean, I think it's, it's sort of starting to show that without a full-time person, when they're only here part of the week, it's like they just kind of get into whatever's going on and then they're gone again. So we're just really not able to, to keep up with those activities. So those are the two kind of driving forces behind looking to make it full-time. Really, they could take on some of those, the kind of the more straightforward tasks in the office that again would let, let me take on some more of the planning tasks. We have seen fortunately an uptick in some review applications, some big projects over the last few years, and I also think there are some important things we're pursuing. And there, and we have seen some additional mandate, state mandated responsibilities that we're having to take on. We have to have a housing affordability plan, the MS4 requirements, Aqua for Protection. So there are some additional things there that I, I've taken on too. So it, we do have a zoning enforcement officer, there's sort of an added component here. There is also just a side note, the building official has a zoning enforcement officer title as part of his position. That's because state building code requires many, many building permits to be signed off by a zoning enforcement officer. So basic building permit plan reviews that aren't reviewed or don't involve my office can be signed off by him, but he doesn't do enforcement activity.
So this is sort of the culmination of the evolution of your office since 2012?
Yeah, exactly.
Counselor Fishbein?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So one of the concerns that comes to mind is, you know, ZBA sort of runs in conflict with planning and zoning itself. It's the concept of ZBA to allow for exception to planning and zoning. And I think traditionally, at least in our town, the department head has been the overseer of both bodies.
Actually, when I was assistant planner, I was staff to the ZBA. And since that time, the, the part-timer has been the staff to the ZBA. So I do interact with that person, we review the applications beforehand. I typically don't attend ZBA meetings now unless there's, unless it's like an order I've issued is being appealed or something like that, because I do do occasional zoning enforcement myself, too.
And as the department head for planning and zoning, you find that to be efficient? Is it sort of like a Chinese wall? Not to use a term that some would take offense to, but.
It's.
Because that conflict is always difficult to deal with.
It is. And, and it's common, it's actually more common for the zoning enforcement officer to staff the zoning board of appeals than for, say, the town planner to staff the zoning board of appeals, partially because sometimes what the zoning board of appeals is considering is an appeal of a decision by the zoning enforcement officer. So therefore, it makes sense for them to be there. But I, I have found, I think that works well for our office. Our current CEO, Amy Torrey, and I do review all of the applications ahead of time so that if there's anything. But again, I think having a, the most important thing in those situations is really having a grasp of what your zoning regulations allow and then any procedural questions that might come up. And then ultimately, I think it's the zoning board of appeals, understanding what the legal requirements for a hardship are and, and agreeing with that or not.
While you bring that up, is there training as to ZBA, the members, and what a hardship is?
We, when there is a new member of the ZBA appointed, we do ask them to come in and I do kind of a tutorial with them about where we review the legal requirements for hardship and things of that nature. We do not have a formal training requirement. There is, and this is actually something we've been taught, Mrs. Torrey and I have been talking about, there, we did it a few, we did it maybe five or six years ago with a previous zoning enforcement officer. There is, there are some training resources available. There's an attorney that's from a land use firm that will come do training for zoning boards of appeals and other land use boards. So we've talked about, since there's been some turnover in the ZBA since that time, I always think information is good. So I, I, we've talked about potentially doing that again because I always think it's a good refresher for everybody, but there is no mandatory training.
Yeah, I appreciate you considering that because that concept is very difficult for most people to understand.
Absolutely.
So somebody was doing this job or is presently doing the job on a part-time basis.
Right.
And I would expect that there is presently a job description for those duties. So one of the inquiries that I thought of when I was reviewing for this meeting is how does this differ from the present job description, just generally?
I think the, primarily what's, what's, I'm not sure that a lot is different. There is more of an emphasis on sort of the public service component, the, the answering the, the sort of basic technical questions at the counter and doing things of that nature. So there's more of an emphasis on this, in this, on that, in this job description than the previous job description.
Yeah, I specifically noticed the sentence, "ability to work in an office setting subject to continuous interruptions."
Yes. Yes, and that's very true.
I know.
And so, so, so there's, there's more of that, and really, it's also just to continue a lot of the activities that are, I mean, this is, in fairness, most of these things are already being done, they're just only being done on a part-time basis. So what ends up happening is my position fills in a lot of those gaps where it doesn't really make sense. My time is not best spent filling in those gaps.
Okay, I thank you for that. And then, you know, the last area of inquiry has to do with the, the building inspector situation.
Yeah.
Because I know, I think it was, it was like four years ago, we had this talk about, it might have even been the job description for that job. Is there an overlap? And will it become necessary to modify that job description? And how is that job being affected? Generally, my thoughts.
I, so the, the zoning enforcement component of the building official position was added before my time here under a previous building official. And like I said, I think a big part of that is because, and, and that position was, I think, had an upgrade at that time. This is 15, 20 years ago, something like that. And, no, maybe more, more than that even. And.
Wasn't it part of the charter?
It's based, I, I don't, I don't know if the description is part of the, the building official may be part of the charter, I don't know.
It seems to me that it's in there or something.
Well, and there, so there is a requirement under building code that a zoning enforcement officer has to sign off on building, has to do building permit reviews. So in order to prevent our, our office from doing reviews, sort of basic, you know, your basic building addition comes in where it really shouldn't have to go through all of those steps, the zoning enforcement officer component was added to the building official so that they can sign off on building permits. Now, what happens in practice is that the, if there are questions, so say somebody wants to build a garage, pretty straightforward building permit application, but maybe there's a question about the maximum square footage of the garage. So the building official, if, if there's a question about interpretation on a specific plan review, will, you know, come ask our zoning enforcement officer and they'll kind of go through it. But our, our, and I think depending on who you ask, maybe there is, I, I think maybe a desire by some to have our office do every single one of those plan reviews, but we just don't have the capacity to do that.
So who makes the decision which ones your office handles and which ones the building department handles?
Sure. So every, every single building permit application goes through the building department, obviously. What has to get reviewed, any, what doesn't get reviewed by my office typically is residential applications. So in addition to a house, a garage, unless it needs a variance or a special exception or something like that, then it gets kicked over to us. Or if there's a question, if there's any question or uncertainty, I mean, we're, that's why it's helpful, we're right next to each other, so there's a lot of communication.
Okay, okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yep, Counselor Laterno?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Casey, so you have a part-timer, you have a part-timer now. Is that position going to get eliminated and then go to full-time?
Yeah, so that would be the intention. And actually, I think the assistant town planner position is still technically, the full-time position is still technically on the books as an empty. full-time position is still technically on the books as an empty position, but the idea would be that position would continue not to get filled. The part-time position would not be filled. Um, so this position, um, if it is made full-time, obviously has to get filled through the normal hiring process. Um, so, um, we would go through that process, but yeah, the part-time position would get eliminated and then we'd just have the full-time.
Okay, so the person you have there now could apply for the, the full-time position.
Yeah.
Would, would shared duties with the, um, um, the building department, um, with blight? So is, is blight going to stay there or is it still gonna, is it going to be kind of shared or?
There's no intention to do that. Um, the blight ordinance, I think assigns, depending on what the blight issue is, assigns the item either to building, to health or to the police department, and that would stay the same.
Okay.
We do, we did in the past, we, we were, I was actually talking about this with the building official tonight. We used to have the problem sites committee where, um, building and my office and fire sort of would, would get together every few months and talk about, um, those types of issues that tend to have overlap. So we have been talking, again, if, if this position, that's something I've been talking about, if this position does become full-time, we could also probably, we would probably be able to restore something like that to help move some of these things along.
That would be a great idea.
Yeah.
Because it's, it's way past needed again. The last time that, that was in place, I know you, you people handle a lot because it wasn't just your departments, the police department was involved, fire department, you know, the health department. Um, and since then, we've had a lot of light areas creep up and it's, it seems to be growing and not shrinking.
Yeah, it's, and it's tough to keep up with.
It is tough to keep up because people are people, so. All right, thank you.
Any other questions, comments from the council? Questions or comments from the public? Then we're all set. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Certainly. Fishbein.
Yes.
Laffin.
Yes.
Letourneau.
Yes.
Maroon.
Yes.
Chertel.
Yes.
Testa.
Yes.
And Chairman Savoni.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Onto item eight.
I move we approve the job description for assistant office manager for the electric division.
Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Testa.
Mr. Chairman, if I may interrupt, um, I have to recuse myself from this item because this will affect my, uh, my
You have a relationship.
Yeah, I have a relationship.
Yes.
So I will not be vote, I, when it comes to a vote, I will abstain, but I can't be part of the discussion.
All right, I will ignore you for the next several minutes.
That's nothing new, but go ahead.
Obviously I need to be more deliberate about it. Good evening, gentlemen.
Good evening.
If you could remind us who you are for the record.
Jim Hutt, Town Human Resources Director.
Tony Buchary, General Manager, Wallingford Electric Division.
Rick Hendershaw, Director of Public Utilities.
Thank you. Is this a position that already exists?
This is a new job description.
Okay.
We're here seeking your approval for this new job description. Uh, it has a, a pay grade of seven with a salary range of seventy-four thousand, six hundred and four dollars to ninety-five thousand, four hundred and fifty-two. And we did provide you a copy of the draft job description and will be more than happy to answer any questions you might have.
Okay. So how did we get to this point where we need this position?
We've observed for some time that the business office manager in the electric division spends in what we feel is an ordinary amount of time on minor, um, um, supervisory oversight jobs or tasks. Uh, and it prevents him from spending as much time as we would like on the large overarching finance and administration issues of our seventy million dollar a year utility. Um, we've looked at it in detail recently and, um, the typical day has him spending twenty percent or more of his time, um, with those sorts of things. Uh, there's a staff of six and a half full-time equivalents that would, would report to this new position. So there's seven and a half, um, um, full-time equivalents that report to the business office manager in addition to, uh, a customer service supervisor that herself supervises eight people. So collectively, there's a need there to free up the, um, business office manager from those more routine and mundane supervisory and oversight tasks and make him more available for the, uh, the, the larger scale finance and admin work we, we need him to be more involved with. And it's important to note that we're not changing the headcount, that the plan would be to take a vacant grade three accountant position, not fill it, and instead replace it with this position. This position, as well as some other changes to that accounting staff that I just described, are all included in the budget that was prepared and passed April, May timeframe. So this is just sort of the last stop in what's been a, a mini reorganization of the business office. We've already made all the changes and eliminated or filled positions in that office clerical staff. And, and now we, we'd like to utilize this new job description to complete the, complete the task.
Thank you. Questions from the council? There appear to be none. Questions or comments from the public? Wow, you did a bang-up job.
From you, that means a lot, sir.
Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Fishbein.
Yes.
Laffin.
Yes.
Letourneau.
Abstain.
That's right, I'm sorry. Maroon.
Yes.
Chertel.
Yes.
Testa.
Yes.
Chairman Savoni.
Yes.
And the motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Very much.
Thank you.
Onto item nine.
I move we approve the assignment of tax assessment agreement for the Hilton Hotel to Waldo, Wall Ford Owner LLC, owner of one, one eight one Barnes Road.
Second.
Moved and seconded. So this, uh, item was discussed, uh, at our last meeting and, uh, we subsequently learned that, um, if the agreement is to be properly assigned, we should assign it to the correct owner. Is that correct?
That is correct, yes.
And we were talking to, uh, we referenced Emerald Properties at the last meeting, uh, and this is to correct that the property is actually owned by Walford Owner LLC. Am I correct?
Yes, created by Emerald Hospitality.
Thank you. Counselor Letourneau.
So at the last meeting, the people that were in front of us, the two gentlemen that sat here, they were from Emerald or?
I'm, I'm sorry, Counselor, I didn't hear.
Oh, okay. At, at, at the last meeting that we talked about this, the two gentlemen that came before us, they were from, um, Emerald?
Emerald Hospitality, yes. But Emerald Hospitality went and created an LLC and that LLC is the actual owner of the Hilton Garden Inn.
So was that, to your knowledge, was that created between the last meeting and tonight?
No, it, it was previously.
And how come nobody told us that?
I, I can't answer that.
Okay. Um, I, I'm just a little myth that the gentleman came, told us how great they are and held that information from us. And apparently the, um, we didn't find out until, until we got our packets. So I, you know, uh, so what do we do? We're going to have to, we should re-vote.
Well, yeah, just to be clear, I, I got a phone call from Attorney Small the next day explaining the oversight. It, it was not, they weren't misleading us. It, it was not
No, I, I, but it would have been nice to, you know, you got the phone call, you knew about it, but we didn't, I didn't know about it until I got my packet. So, you know, well, it was kind of a surprise. It was kind of a surprise. I'm not saying that they misled us, but it would have been nice for them to, to say that, you know, well, wait a minute, we're, we are Walford. You know, that's, that's who we are. Instead of saying, you know, and the, the name Emerald was brought up quite a few times during the meeting. So, you know, that's, that's all. Thank you.
Okay, Counselor Chertel.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, I don't know other counselors' experience. I've only been up here for like three and a half years, but there are meetings that I go home and it seems pretty clear-cut. I don't really think about it again. There's other meetings where I replay the meeting in my head and go back over the votes and, and second guess myself, just like I do on a lot of other things. And this was one of those. Um, and I reflected back on the meeting, I reflected on the discussion. And the more I thought about it, I, I, I was, kept going back to a few things that were said. You know, Counselor Fishbein, I thought in his questioning brought up the fact and it came out, I think also with Chairman Savoni's questions, you know, the, this group is investing in this property. The investment is not tied to this tax abatement. They're investing in this property one way or the other and it partially do because they need to maintain the Hilton brand. Um, I work for an employer, Anthem, that also has to maintain a brand. We are Anthem Blue Cross Blue Shield. And to keep the cross and the shield on the building and on the letterhead, we have to meet certain service standards. And if we lose the cross and the shield, we just become another, you know, insurance company. And so I, as I was reflecting on that, I was thinking, yeah, it's the same thing for this, you know, they, they don't want to just be the Wallingford Hotel by the highway. They want to be Hilton. That brand means something. So that's what's driving their investment. And they were asked, I think, a few times about their motives for investing. The other answer they gave was they believe in their own business model. They didn't say, we need this tax abatement that you promised to the first guy. They didn't say that. So that, I kept going back to that. Uh, and I also thought, you know, Counsel Letourneau raised good points that maybe I too easily dismissed about, you know, what do agreements mean? Uh, we had an agreement. Mr. Winston's participation was part of that agreement. He's now no longer part of it. The agreement's void. Um, there's nothing to honor. This is a new agreement, uh, if we do it. So I kept going back to that. And then I think the last thing that I kept going back to was kind of what everyone else said, and I think I may have said it too, about, well, the money, we don't count on the, we're not expecting the money or the money's not, is already out there. And I'm thinking, well, well, that's not really true. We, we have what, three years? So we'd have no idea what these next three budgets are going to bring. You know, yeah, when, when we know, all we know is that when each of these next three budgets, when that process begins with the mayor and Mr. Bose and all his department heads, he's going to start with a big red negative of a hundred thousand dollars and change. That's the starting point because of this tax abatement. We know that. But to say that, well, the money's already, we're not counting on the money. I mean, we don't know that. In, in two years, do you, there could be some pet project of any one of us where we could sure use a hundred thousand dollars. I mean, I'll tell you, this year for me, it took me two weeks to get the pool open when I was working with everyone and I'm grateful for the mayor and for Vinnie and for everyone helping, but it took me a lot of back and forth to get 50 grand. And I'm looking at giving away 300 grand over, over three years or more than that. So these are all the things that I was reflecting on after that meeting. Uh, and especially working for a company like I do, that's very brand focused and thinking about that's motivating this investment. Um, if we don't give this tax abatement, there is nothing that's going to change up the road. They're still going to invest a million dollars in the hotel. They, they said that, nothing will change. They will do everything, but the town will get back or want that 300,000, 350,000 dollars that we could certainly use. And then the only other point that came back to me was what Counsel Letourneau, I think, also mentioned was about, um, that we don't give tax abatements lightly. Uh, and I thought back to my, again, this is another example of my employer. I thought back to Anthem. Anthem, when we moved to Wallingford from North Haven about eight years ago, got a four-year tax abatement, I want to say for about a hundred thousand dollars a year. That was approved by the council back, I think in 2011. And it, you know, I think that made sense because over a thousand people were coming to Wallingford to work here, eat lunch here, maybe go places after work, shop here. You know, this, there's 35 people that, that work up there. They may hire some more people and as they said, they're going to hire more people whether or not we give them this abatement. So, um, like I said at the outset, I don't, at some meetings I go home and I sleep easy because I feel like I made the right decision. Other meetings I don't. This was one of them and we don't, we don't get redos a lot, uh, ever, but it, we happened to get a redo and, uh, after I've reflected on it, I am going to change my vote on this issue. So I just wanted to make that, uh, clear and so people understood why. So thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Counselor Fishbein.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, you know, I appreciate everything that's been said already. Um, always appreciate debating these things. You know, when I became to my attention in the agenda that Emerald is really not so much in the mix, um, you know, I went on the Secretary of State's website and I looked up this new entity. And according to their records, this was created May 17th of 2019. So, and it's unfortunate that people aren't here before us, but you know, usually you do something like this when you're, the only asset is going to be, you know, that thing that you're purchasing, that piece of real estate. You know, so we're sold sort of like a bill of goods, with all due respect, you know, that this is an Emerald project, Emerald's behind this, and we have the full backing of all these other properties. But that's apparently not the case. I, I don't know. Um, I can only go by what's before us now. So then I go on Emerald's website and I see the press release that they put out for this acquisition. And there, they don't mention Walford, but they say that they're doing this in partnership with Nimbus Investment and Core Real Estate Capital. All news to me, I don't remember any of those entities being mentioned the other time. I, I just feel like we're sort of getting into the same situation. And, and I, I want to point out that the press release on their website says nothing about investing a million dollars in this new program, new property to, you know, enhance it and make it, you know, there's nothing like that. That's their own thing. I think I would feel more comfortable, quite frankly, and, and I, I did mention this to a fellow counselor, um, a couple of weeks ago, you know, if we had some sort of strong clawback provision, um, and actually I think the only way a clawback would be able to work here, and it's a little weird, is if it was upon the subsequent owner. Because if this is the only asset that this entity owns and we say that you sell within, let's say 10 years, they're gone. There's no way we would be able to claw that money back. So we would have to get it from whoever subsequently owned it. It would be something on the land records that people would have noticed of when they did a title search to do the closing. I think I would feel a little bit more comfortable. I don't know that it would get me over the hump, but you know, I, I just have a bad taste in my mouth from the representations that were made to us last time. In fact, the transaction happened with no notice to us at least, that it was going to happen. You know, no ability to analyze those numbers. As I mentioned last time, for all I know, they paid a lesser amount with the understanding they didn't get the tax abatement. And now they're standing before us asking for the tax abatement, which I, I appreciate that. I mean, the research that I've done, these are all, you know, very intuitive business people and I don't hold that against them. But, you know, my due diligence and my research just makes that bad taste in my mouth even worse. So I just want to say that. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Counselor Maroon.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You know, I bring us back to when the, there was a vacant building on the side of Route 68 and we entered into a, a tax abatement agreement, uh, in an effort to get the building developed. So we had agreed to a certain term for it and I agree 100% with Counselor, um, Chertel that the agreement was with a different owner, right? So the owner changed his hands and the thought of this council was to extend the, that same agreement to the new owner. So I guess my issue is all of this, you know, So I guess my issue is all of this, you know, pretending like the, the change in name is, is a serious offense or some sort of a, that there's something behind it. You know, this is how business is done every day all over the world. So the fact that it's not, the gentleman that were before us, the gentleman that organized the funds, where the money came from and all that, we don't ask that of any other business in town. So my concern is we in good faith had a vote. We agreed to extend the tax payment. I understand completely that we can now pull it back. But we, we're a town that tries to fancy ourselves as being friendly to business. We advertise a lot about our electric rates. Uh, we're trying to develop the downtown TOD area through tax abatements and so on and so forth. So it seems a little specious to me that in this instance, we decide that because we can take the money back, let's take it back. So based on that, I can see where this is going tonight. And I'd like to make a motion to table this, uh, item uh, until the next meeting when we could perhaps have the, the full attendance. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Second. There is a motion to table on the table. Yes, Counselor Laffin?
Um, and I, I think the, the added benefit, the, the bigger benefit here would be if we could have the, the owners come back to adequately. So there's no more.
Mr. Chairman, I, I know that Attorney Small did talk to the owners of it. Uh, they were willing to come back. And I, I suggest that, you know, in all fairness to them, that they should be given the opportunity to be heard on that. We did not say to them, yeah, you better get plane tickets and get here. They did inquire about it though.
So, and that's another reason I, I'll support the tabling so that we can really have another round at that discussion since people clearly have questions or concerns.
I saw Counselor Letourneau's hand first.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You know, we can table it. We can have them come in front of us, explain the difference between Emerald and, and the new, um, Walford owner and all of that. But it still goes back to the core of the contract. And the core of the contract was we have that right because Mr. Winston is no longer involved with the entity. It's clear in the contract that we have the right to pull that money back. And it's not, it, it, you know, this isn't not being business friendly. I think it's being prudent to the town, to the taxpayer. If Mr. Winston was, was involved in the contract, to the letter of the contract with the new entity, we wouldn't be having this conversation. It would just be done. But the fact of he is gone, he is out of this. He's out, he no, has nothing to do with Emerald. He has nothing to do with Walford. The gentleman told us so. I asked him directly. They said so. He's out of it. And that in itself should be enough to be able to pull that money back. It's not like we're being unfriendly. It, it's taxpayer money. It's not our money. This is taxpayer money that we're getting back. And you know, to, to, to build Wallingford is, is a, not a, a business friendly town. No, we are a business friendly town. And that's how we ended up. It was a, it was a good fit when that hotel was vacant out there. And, and counselors got phone calls. I know I did. When are you guys going to do something with that hotel? It's an eyesore. What's going on? What's going on? What's going on? Mr. Winston came to town. There was a lot of work that went into it. We needed him. He needed us. It was a good, it was a good marriage. And to entice him to come and, and he was really going to come anyhow, but it, it helped him with his financing. So the good business people that we are, we offered them, and it wasn't 100% abatement. This was a portion abatement. And this was figured out by the, by, by, uh, Shelby in the Tax Department. So and, and it worked. It worked. It worked well. The project got built. It's a beautiful project. People moved on. This group came in, they purchased that property from Mr. Winston, Winston for 14 million dollars. And I can't blame them for coming in front of us and trying to get it back. I mean, trying to get it continued. But it's in the contract. It's in that contract. It's very plain, very clear. It wasn't pages and pages and pages of legalese. It was about a paragraph that really cleared it up. Counselor Fishbein picked up on it after I got through speaking. He picked right up on it and there was some legal things that he asked them. And they agreed they should have had it taken care of ahead of time before the closing. But they're coming. They're coming whether, whether, and, and, and they said as much. Whether they get the money or they don't get the money, they're coming. They're here. They purchased it. Whatever the group is that purchased it. If Emerald purchased it and then turned it over to, to this other, uh, Walford owner LLC, so be it. That's, that's just the way business is. But we have the business also of getting some taxpayer money back. This is our opportunity. Thank you.
Counselor Fishbein?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, I just want to address the, um, anti-business situation. You know, I respectfully disagree. I, I think we are pretty open to business. This would be a totally different discussion if we were having this consideration pre-closing. But we're not. And the, and the language, um, allows for termination. So the players took the risk and did the closing anyway. They just did it in May. We're here at the beginning of July. They were here at the end of June. I really don't understand why they had to close that thing so quickly without getting before us. Nobody's ever going to be able to explain that without opening their files. And that just does not make sense to me. That being said, I'm concerned about the precedent that we set by, you know, I think it's apparent that this is not going to pass if we vote tonight. I'm very concerned about the precedent that we sit, we set based upon tea leaves and attendance in manipulating a vote in, in effect. Because I, I think the proponents of the motion are saying, well, if everyone was here tonight, which, I mean, there's a majority here. There's only two missing. Then we're going to pass it anyway. Well, that's not the way this is supposed to work, quite frankly. So I'm just concerned about that aspect of this going forward on other issues. Um, and that being used as a tactic in, in that fashion. So thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Certainly, Counselor Testa?
Thank you. With all due respect to Counselor Letourneau and to an extent, some of the arguments being made right now by Mr. Counselor Fishbein, rearguing the decision is, in my opinion, not even appropriate under the motion we're talking about. If we wanted to change our mind on this decision, then we need to follow the process of having somebody re, make a motion to do so. And I forget it has to come from the winning side or the losing side, you know, there's a process. Honestly, I respect everything Counselor Schratel said. I too have had, you know, how else can I put it? I've had second thoughts about this myself. I've understand the opposition to it. I understand that the arguments have been made. And I, you know, been rethinking this one myself. Re, re-going over it and, um, and saying, well, you know, was this really, you know, the more I thought about it, would I still make the same decision if it was before me again? My argument, my justification for the decision uh, that evening was that had nothing to do with being business friendly, this, that, or the other thing. Even I had, I talked about that. It was, I felt that the, the Emerald purchased the property and rightfully, in my opinion, the tax agreement went with it. Just as in a deed, if there was something in the deed. Not exactly the same thing, but that was my opinion. That was my feeling. And I thought it was right for us to honor that because it was part of the package that they were purchasing. I totally understand the, the discomfort, if you will, with them not, not asking us beforehand and, but it's not ours. Our place to say, to question their business decisions, you know, they should have waited. Well, maybe. And if this falls for them, then they, you know, shame on them. But tonight, we're being asked to do what in effect is a tech, technicality. It has nothing to do with the, with the, with the decision. And to reargue it this evening is not appropriate. We don't have that luxury or right. If we want to reargue it, then make a motion to change our, our decision at a different time. Tonight is a formality. And there was nothing underhanded about them doing this. They formed an LLC to purchase this property. They came here as the organization behind that LLC to let them, let us know who they are. So I, I'm talking, I'm really speaking procedurally now. Not even talking about the, the right, right or wrong of the decision, the merits of it. I don't think it's appropriate for us to be making a decision and talking about it again or using the oppo, using the opportunity to change our mind under the auspices of, of, of an, of a motion that really has nothing to do with the merits of the, of the agreement. The motion has nothing to do with that. The motion is the correction of the line of, of the name. Let's be honest about it. That's all it is. So I, I think we're, we're, if we want to talk about setting a wrong precedent, that's the wrong precedent right there, in my opinion. Thank you.
You know, Counselor Testa nailed this on the head. This is just correcting the name of the entity. I don't think there was any bad faith by Emerald in terms of their coming before us uh, and, and not clarifying the name of the entity that took title to the hotel here in Wallingford. So this really, this really is a procedural correction, if you will. Uh, I saw Counselor Letourneau's hand first.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Attorney Farrell, if, if this correction tonight in front of us ends up in a no vote, what happens?
Are you asking the question of whether the town's open to litigation because of that?
If that's, if that's your opinion, then I'd like to know about that.
I, I thought that Counselor Testa made a good point that it really is, seems to be a revote, but I'm not going to take that position. He made a good argument on it.
Well, okay, if it's open to litigation, that, that, that could be an interesting, probably an interesting court case then because the way the original contract reads that, like I said before, if Mr. Winston's not involved, I mean, so what are, what are we going to litigate something that, that is not even that's not correct in the contract?
I, I'm just talking about whether it's, it's a revote or not. That's, I'm, I, I'm not saying that last meeting you had any exposure on that. It's a question of whether the group could argue that really all you're doing is deciding to revote on it without putting that on the agenda.
Okay, so tonight, there, there's a couple of things we can do. We can delay this process and drag it out. Or is it possible to waive Rule 5 and put it on the agenda right now?
I don't think there's a basis for a Rule 5 waiver. That, that
Well, it's not an agenda item.
The Rule 5 waiver is, is an administrative efficiency. I mean, I think we need to bear in mind that the Law Department discussed, uh, with the Emerald Walford people, whether or not they needed to be here. It, because this was merely an administrative correction. The fact that we're going forward without them now is, is something that we really need to consider.
So how is it going to change with them being here?
They have the opportunity to make their presentation again and perhaps explain or respond to the disparaging comments about the deception of their name.
Well, I don't think there was disparaging comments, Mr. Chairman. I just think it was just a, you know, they came in front of us as Emerald Hospitality and then tonight we get a document that says Walford Owner LLC.
You implied that you felt deceived that I didn't call you the next day after I'd heard from the Law Department about the technical issue.
Well, it would have been nice to know about it.
There's a lot of things that'd be nice.
Yeah, I know. In a perfect world, and we, that we are not, so. So I guess we're at a, at a stalemate here of, of what we're doing, or we could take a vote. We could, we could take a vote tonight. A procedural vote somehow or another. We could take.
There is a motion to table on the table.
Well, then we need a vote on that.
Well, I'll call that question then. Madam Clerk, would you ta, take the roll call on the motion to table?
Yes, I will.
Well, I'm calling the vote on it. I'm not calling the question.
We're calling the vote on the motion to table. Am I correct, Mr. Chairman?
We're, we're talking about tabling.
I just wanted to address this procedural issue though, because we're having this back and forth about what we're doing and if I may.
Mr. Chairman, am I calling the vote?
Well, I'm, I'm going to give Counselor Fishbein a last crack at this one.
Why, just every time we keep on peeling back the onions. So the, the issue about it being a procedural correction, whose mistake are we correcting? Not ours. Theirs. So the question was, if it fails, do we open ourselves up to litigation? They screwed up. Not us. So I don't see how it could possibly lead to litigation. The, the fact of the matter is that it is procedural, but there is no vote to overturn. So effectively, if the vote is to occur and it does go down, it doesn't get rid of the old vote. There would still be an authorization by this body to give a tax decrease to Emerald. Doesn't say when it has to be in the name of Emerald. That would still stand. We didn't mention that. Because that is not on the table. So the issue before us is whether or not to correct their mistake. That's it. So, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
On the motion to table?
Okay, the motion to table. Going to move to motion to table the item for full attendance of the council. Fishbein?
No.
Laffin?
Yes.
Letourneau? Marone?
Yes.
Shortell?
No.
Testa?
No.
Chairman Savoni?
Yes.
That, that table motion fails.
Counselor Laffin?
Yeah, since we're not tabling it, um, the, the Winston participation thing is I understood it always was if he remained, that allowed for the holder, for the owner, for the tax incentive recipient to automatically carry and continue receiving the incentive. It does not mandate his not being included as a new owner does not mandate that we do not give them the incentive. It, it gives us the option. And I just wanted it clear because I think as different people are saying it different ways, it sounds like that we just came up with this all on our own and threw it at them type of thing. It just, we're not obligated to give it to them. Um, but we have the option to, and that option was exercised two weeks ago. You talked about You talked about waiving Rule 5 and we talked about setting precedents. That would be a far more catastrophic precedent that basically the council would be saying that we can undo any of our actions without notice, just because we might have seen an opportunity of counselors present or not, which goes back to what Counselor Fishbein was saying, to undo or redo things that, that failed or passed in subsequent meetings. I still think it's fair that with the back and the forth and the changing wording and first we're offended by Walford or Emerald and then we're not, with all that, I think it's better that they be here to represent themselves and then it be properly noticed. Whether we change it here now, or if somebody wants to officially put it on the agenda to undo the tax incentive and have them come back in here to fairly be present and speak their mind. So that being said, then I'm just going to withdraw the motion, my motion, and take it back. So it's just not happening.
Madam Clerk, who had the second?
Marone.
That was me.
Marone.
I'll withdraw my second.
Okay. And there is no motion on the table? There being no further business on the agenda, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Is there a?
Second.
Second by Shortell. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, I declare this meeting adjourned.